I'd like to call the meeting of the Urbana City Council to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Jacobson?
Here.
Mr. Madigan? Ms. Marlin?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smythe?
Here.
Mayor Pressing.
Um, here. Charlie?
Yeah, I just got a note from Michael Madigan. He has the flu and will not be attending tonight.
Okay, thank you. First item is the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, January 21st, 2014. Moved by Carol Ammons and seconded by Dennis Roberts. Any additions or corrections? Bill?
Um, just kind of, I guess, a comment or correction. Um, I just wanted to note that if you put the, uh, the resolution we passed on the traffic stop task force that was on the, uh, in the packet originally with the amendments that are in the minutes, you won't come out with the past version because we received a different version at our desk and sometimes we make changes between the time we send out the packets and the time we amend it. So at some point, we should, maybe when we're putting out the announcement for, um, for people to apply for the, we could make that available in the final form.
Um, I got the final form of the resolution, so I'll put that up on the website for people to apply, but do you want to correct the minutes? I mean, did you just notice it tonight? Maybe you could write it up and we could get it.
Well, there's nothing, I, it depends what you start with, I guess, in the minutes. So I guess there's no correction, assuming that we all started with the same version that was on our desk, not the one that was in the packet.
So how do you deal with that, Madam Clerk?
There's actually no correction needed because the information that's here is what you all discussed the last time and so in the, the final form of your resolution will be the new one that everybody voted on at the last meeting.
Okay, thank you.
So there's no correction needed in the minutes for that.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Eric?
So in other words, the history of the previous version has sort of been erased and only the last version remains. Okay.
All right. Um, we haven't voted on the minutes yet, right? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Are there any additions to the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on. Petitions and communications. I have two people. If anybody else would like to speak to us, please fill out one of these little white cards and give it to our clerk, Phyllis Clark. First is Carletta Donaldson.
Thanks. It's Carletta Donaldson, 406 East Brookins Drive in Urbana. I had a short conversation just before the meeting with Mr. Tom Corino regarding the, um, Department of Community Development Services Activities Report for January where it says 2013 year in review and he did assure me that he would mention something when we get to Philo Road, just an update on what is known or not known about the Unity Performing Arts Center and that would probably help at least one alderman as well that doesn't seem to know as well. So he assured me that when that comes up, is that correct? Okay, just wanted to be on record. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And, um, we have Doc, Reverend Dr. Evelyn and Bishop King James Underwood, 1309 West Tremont Street, who do not wish to speak but are still, um, concerned about the sewers on, um, in the Ellis subdivision. Did I get that right? Okay, thank you. Anyone else want to speak?
Carol McCusick, 1907 North Cunningham. Um, this is the zoning ordinance and I bought it, uh, at the clerk's office at, on, um, June 28th, 2013. Um, and there's something just like this that's spiral bound that has supplanted it as a result of city council action on September 16th, 2013. And I'm really suggesting, I don't think that when, when, neither at Plan Commission nor here in city council, I don't think that enough attention was given to, um, the form of publication and I'd like to make a, um, argument for web publication of the zoning ordinance. Um, and it occurs to me that, um, people who were architects and stuff or construction people are gonna wanna, um, uh, anticipate what the zoning ordinance is gonna be and then they're also gonna wanna have a record of what ordinances they were doing their work under in the past. And you also want absolute clarity about what the rules are at any given time. So, um, I think there should be a, um, you know, a list of versions, like as long as you're, as long as the street. I mean, continuously with every text amendment that amends this ordinance, um, the entire new, uh, okay, no, let me say that. Whenever the staff of the community development prepare a new version of the zoning ordinance, I should, I think it should be done as an electronic file that is a markup of what it was before and all those files are in a list with the, what it is now at the top. Um, so, uh, anytime, um, oh, okay, they, they would prepare it. Um, did I say everything now? I think I might've said, oh, one of the other thing has to do with, um, no, that's about it. I think that's my idea.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to unfinished business. First is ordinance number 2014 dash 01 dash 110, an ordinance approving a preliminary development plan for a planned unit development at 704 East Windsor Road, Burden Prairies Village.
Good evening and Jeff Angstrom and I will be tag teaming this presentation. Uh, we're hoping to provide one staff report for items one and two, if that would be acceptable?
Sure.
So, did you wanna go ahead and then read off the second item, too?
Okay, ordinance number 2014 dash 01 dash 111, an ordinance approving a final development plan for a planned unit development at 704 East Windsor Road, Burden Prairies Village.
Okay. Thank you. And, um, what we have this evening is, um, a revisitation, if you will, of a planned unit development that was proposed at the same location and approved by the city council in 2012 and hopefully many of you are familiar with that previous proposal. Um, there are three parts to the presentation this evening, the preliminary and final, uh, PUD plan, which are items one and two on your agenda, and then following that will be the preliminary plat, the subdivision plat. Um, I would just state, um, in terms of what is a planned unit development, it's a provision in our zoning ordinance, it's a common provision in zoning ordinances to allow for flexibility for certain developments that are developed in a unified fashion and, um, offers some unique attributes or amenities to the public and, um, allow for flexibility both in the use designations that we have in the zoning ordinance as well as in the development regulations that we have in the ordinance. So in this example, the zoning on this property along Windsor Road was formerly occupied by the Windsor Swim Club is shown as R3, which is one of our single and two-family residential zones. However, the development in large part would be something that you would more often see in a R4 type of designation, but because of the surrounding zoning that you can see on the overhead now, we, we're interested in retaining that single-family zoning and working within the planned unit development to allow for higher density development that offered amenities. And if you're familiar with the planned unit development provisions in the zoning ordinance, we do allow for in the promotion of infill developments is one of the categories which this would cover as well as residential planned unit developments. So, um, back in 2012, a very similar development was proposed and approved by the Urbana City Council. Since that time, um, the developer, Gary Olson, has sought to do financing for the project to get the construction started and has also been working quite a bit on marketing. And, um, the 2012 approval was for primarily a condominium development. It had a variety of different densities and buildings on the property. Unfortunately, the financial institutions were not ready for that particular type of ownership pattern and, uh, they asked the developer to look again at subdividing the property to allow for ownership. And this has resulted in a redo of the property to provide a similar number of units. Uh, actually, we're looking at 46 units, whereas 48 were, were approved, but 31 of those would be individual townhomes where the owners would own the entire unit and the land underneath. So it would not be a condominium and rather than a structure with flat style condominium units in the front of the property, those would actually be an apartment building with 15 units. And this is what not only the local lenders, but also the marketing efforts indicated would be successful at this location. Because, um, this has been redesigned for the land ownership, that has resulted in a lot of other changes to the site plan due to requirements for lot frontage and just the necessity to plot out the different lots in the development. So, uh, the developer has come back to the city of Urbana with revised site plan. This went through two reviews at the Plan Commission. The Plan Commission had some very thoughtful comments on the site plan, which have actually been incorporated into the plan that's before you this evening. Um, let's see, there is a very long memo that has been prepared and I, I don't propose to go through the memorandum in detail unless, uh, there's a request for that, but, uh, a very excellent memorandum prepared by the planning staff that goes through what the PUD is, what the background is. It goes through the criteria for planned units development. It goes through, um, you know, discussion of the development and, uh, the different aspects of the site plan. Um, it identifies specifically the, um, deviations that the planned unit development will allow, uh, as that's required and those are actually spelled out on page 13 and 14 and, um, they are not substantial in nature, but they have to do with, um, some of the setbacks, lot area, um, height of the apartment building, lot width. And again, these development regulations are to be flexible in a planned unit development. Um, let's see, one other thing I wanted to mention was the fiscal impact of the development since it is a substantial undeveloped site. You know, Urbana is getting fairly built out in some respects. We do have some growth opportunities, but again, this is a redevelopment and might be considered an infill site. Um, it's about four acres in size and this is a pretty significant development, so we've gone ahead with the Tom Corino's assistance and done some of the projected tax revenues that this development would provide to the community upon its build out. And this would be, yield about close to $300,000 per year to the taxing bodies, including about $42,000 to the city of Urbana and about $6,700 to Cunningham Township each year. So it would be an improvement to our tax base and, uh, as well as an assistance to the Urbana School District, which would, uh, receive about $155,000 per year in tax revenue. So that's just a little bit on the fiscal impact. Um, I know that Jeff here was going to point out some things on the site plan and, um, Gary Olson as well has a short presentation for you this evening. So did you wanna point out some things?
Just wanted to point out a few, uh, key elements of the site plan. Um, there'll be, the developers proposing to build a new street, which will be a cul-de-sac street. Um, there'll be a commons lot inside the bulb of the cul-de-sac street for the enjoyment of all the residents in the development. That's kind of a novel use and it's something allowed for by the subdivision code, things like that. Um, towards the, uh, one thing I wanted to point out was as a result of the Plan Commission comments, um, the developers now having the apartment building, um, it's 15 unit building. It's on the interior of the site. Um, at the previous iteration, it was towards the edge of the site next to some duplexes in the southwest corner, um, but now it won't be so visible. It'll have less impact, uh, to adjacent neighbors. Um, one other key feature is a private alley proposed to access, uh, townhouse units, which are gonna be in the southeast corner of the site. Um, and this private alley is, it's only accessed through the cul-de-sac for public, but the developer is proposing to do, um, emergency only access directly through, uh, to Windsor Street, Windsor Avenue, or I'm sorry, Windsor Road, um, which will allow fire trucks and such to pull through should they ever, uh, need to get back and fight a fire down here. Um, so all the access, um, requirements are met. Another access thing to point out is a perimeter sidewalk and walking path around the site, which is a holdover from the previous approval, which, um, provides access to every, uh, unit within the site, something staff approves of. Um, so those are some of the, the highlights and I think Gary will probably go through the types of units in a little more depth.
Any questions for the staff at this time? Bill?
Um, yeah, thanks. First on that, um, that private alley, since it's gonna be used for emergencies, would that be, um, considered kind of like a, a fire lane? And in the wintertime when there's less snow, if the, um, town, I mean, if the, whoever's responsible for clearing that is snow presumably couldn't stack it at the south end there because a fire truck wouldn't be able to get through. So how, what kind of arrangements are there for that?
Oh, that's something the developer will have to, uh, work out with the homeowners association, but there is lots of room in the nearby, um, detention basin, which snow could be shoveled into. And also the center of the cul-de-sac also has some room.
And I do think that would be a violation of our ordinances if they were to block that, that access.
Okay, and then, um, can I follow up?
Go ahead.
Um, on the, the path that goes around the outside, um, I, I think I remember seeing some discussion of whether there would be a fence along the outside or plantings or leave it up to the adjacent property owners to help decide. Um, is there some provision for lighting? Seems like some of that is pretty narrow and could, could be dark.
Um, I'll have, uh, Mr. Olson answer the question on lighting. Um, I do know some neighbors might consider that intrusive. I have attended some of the neighborhood meetings for this development and, um, developer has offered and the neighboring properties have requested that there be individual consultation on what barrier will best suit, whether it's landscaping or fencing and, uh, Mr. Olson has offered to provide what the neighbors request and I'll, um, imagine that he can elaborate further on that.
Okay, thank you.
Diane?
I was just curious, what, um, what will prevent a resident from using this private driveway? I know if I lived in these units, 124 to 131, I would really, really wanna get onto Windsor Road using the private drive. Is there a barrier that will go up?
Yes, there'll be collapsible bollards, um, that the fire truck, the fire department will have the tools to open those.
Okay, so there will be a barrier, okay.
Dennis?
Yeah, that was my concern also. Uh, I, I could see that that would be obvious exit for those people who live in the townhomes. Um, it looks like to me also that, um, while the perimeter walkway seems to be an amenity for maybe exercise, it also seems to me, um, problematic because it, it reduces, um, individual backyard space that might be actually, uh, useful to individual residents and access to, um, uh, the backyard in a way that might provoke, um, concern about safety. Now, one person mentioned that lighting, well, um, another councilman wondered about the lighting in the backyards. Um, I guess I'm wondering about, um, access to the rear of buildings, um, as a safety concern. If the sidewalk is in the front of the buildings, all can see it. If it's in the back, there's a lot more hidden, uh, unobserved activity, it seems to me. Um, I'm not sure that it's something that appeals to me at all.
And again, I think the developer may be able to address that. I think it's seen, as you mentioned, as a recreational amenity and, uh, could've come out of some of the fake focus groups and neighborhood meetings that were held on the development.
Any other comments from the council members? Okay, thank you very much. Is Gary Olson gonna come up now?
Uh, this is, uh, obviously a site plan that you'll see here, too. Uh, I think we'll just use the slides, but that gives you a vision of what it would look like from Windsor looking north, uh, the lower site elevation, uh, the different units. The villas, 15 villas are to the north. Uh, townhomes are, uh, the pink buildings to the left and right, east and west of the site. And the blue is showing a parking area, but they have, we have three levels of apartments, uh, totaling 15 units, uh, on the blue building and everything in front of that will be, uh, basically in case of flooding or raining, uh, too much, that'll be the catch base and then we've had our civil engineer determine with staff what that needs to be in volume. Uh, I wanna thank you for, uh, letting us come back. This is one of those meetings that has been delayed for by weather and for many other reasons, so we're finally back together again and I appreciate, uh, being able to do this. And I'm gonna do this very quickly, I know time is, is of the essence, uh, so I'm gonna kind of flash through and if you have questions about a certain slide, just let me know. We had to change the date several times, but it's February 3rd, right? 2014? Okay. Uh, as you may know, the site used to look originally like this. Uh, since this picture was taken, uh, everything's been demolished and it's kind of a, just a green area, kind of a park-like setting right now. So the site, uh, as shown here is, uh, an entryway, which is also the exit. We were allowed to have one entrance and exit, uh, that goes through the cul-de-sac. That's, uh, actually a, a public street. And as we talked about, uh, the access for the fire department and the fire chief is here and, uh, believe me, we sat down for early morning meeting and worked that out very closely with them. Uh, I think, uh, if you ask him, uh, this is the result of that. We will have a slightly lower curb to be able to get into the site if necessary and the bollards are there to protect people from, uh, having an, uh, that other exit as, uh, Diane, uh, talked about. We have 46 units altogether, which is again, uh, mentioned before, uh, less than we have before. Uh, let's address the outer perimeter, uh, area. Uh, as you may not know, on the west side, that's a required access all the way north through the other side. That's actually, uh, about a, I think it's about an eight foot wide area with a five foot walkway in it now. So the west side will continue all the way through the site to get, uh, further north to the, uh, street to the, to the north. Uh, all our focus meetings that we had with neighbors said that they really would like to have that walking area. Uh, it's about three eighths of a mile and, uh, we expect walkers, runners, uh, I'm sure we can't, we, we can't not have the bikers go through there, but it won't be motorized bikes, it'll be bikes. Uh, this really, I think, allows, uh, more things to happen, uh, on the site that's more of an activity and of course, they always bring you into the site from, uh, the outer perimeter. Uh, lighting is not something that we're planning to do, uh, however, you can see most of the buildings are back onto that and they will be light from the homes themselves. Uh, there will be lighting on the main road, uh, and the cul-de-sac. That's, that's in our narration of what we're, we're going to be doing. So here's the view of the site, uh, in its, in all its different levels. We did move the taller building away. Uh, I think at the same time, the planning commission, uh, talked to us about it, we kind of realized while we were sitting here that, that this would be a better, better design for it. And, uh, we feel that this works, uh, altogether much better than we had it the first time. So we're gonna focus on, uh, the north end, which are the, uh, villas, which we have on the two ends. We have larger villas and the three in the middle are smaller. And again, you can see a gathering place, which is, uh, about half an acre or three eighths of an acre and that would, uh, again, we've, we've had other subdivisions tell us that they really like that for spring, summer and fall usage by the, whoever's, you know, by the whole association gathering there. Uh, quickly, uh, the end units, uh, they all, they both have basements, the smaller units, which we're trying to get, uh, all levels of families, uh, one or two member families, uh, and, and larger ones. I'm gonna have a chance to see the two units together. Uh, we have, uh, a master bedroom, a second bedroom and an option for a stairway that goes up to another, uh, bathroom and, and, uh, master suite on the second floor for, uh, this is a situation, we just sold a unit like this and usually the people that own it don't use that, but when they have visitors, their children, uh, family members or friends come, they're upstairs, they have their own spot. Well, the family stays on the first floor typically. Uh, they have an option here, uh, also for a full basement. The other side is a much smaller unit because we know we have people that can't afford the bigger unit. Uh, they do have two cars, a kitchen and dining room, living room, master suite and a second bedroom, although it's just a smaller unit. Uh, the second floor unit, uh, over the large villa is shown here. Again, it's like another master suite, a full bath, uh, view to the living room below, attic space. And that's basically, uh, additional space that they can upgrade to if they would like to. Uh, general look from the outside, uh, a color version of it, uh, will have a combination of brick, uh, siding and, uh, choices on the inside or whether you wanna a gas fireplace or, uh, if you don't wanna go through with a chimney, you can have an electric fireplace. There'd be a lot of op, options to, uh, to upgrade to something, uh, these are showing everything with upgrades included right now.
Do you have a question here from Eric?
Um, do you, I think I remember-
Do you, I think I remember that we discussed the issue of whether these units would be readily adaptable for geothermal heating.
Yes.
And, and I think the answer was yes, and, and that if it were done during construction, it would be a fairly modest increment, like six or seven thousand dollars? Am I, am I remembering that correctly?
I think we were looking at the, the cost of putting one in might be that much, but it depends upon the volume of the, of the unit.
Ah, yes, of course.
And the payback, I think, we figured would be about a five or six-year payback of what that cost would be. And that's an individual decision. Anyone can have them. They can have gas heat, electric heat if they want, or geothermal. We're looking at the, the townhomes now. We're starting, we start on the, on the right side. You see a basement unit, and we plan to have basements. Or, again, they could choose crawl spaces under each unit. On the second, on the first floor, there's a front courtyard, which is a private courtyard owned by the people in that unit, an entryway, a living room, dining room, closet, an open kitchen, and a stairway that goes up and down, because most people, I think, would like to have. A basement really isn't that much more expensive than a crawl space. And we have a powder room on that floor. Also, we have a patio, which would, the configuration, the patio would be either on the west side or the east side. These are kind of showing up and down, but the actual configuration is it's turned ninety degrees. Second floor, we're showing, showing a balcony, which would be an upgrade if they want the balcony. Two bedrooms, two baths, and large closets, and obviously, a stairway back down. And then, as an overall option, they could have a roof terrace on the third floor, what I call a loft, some people might call it something else, but it'll be kind of a small entertaining area, a large screen TV, whatever they want, a bar. And, again, we have a sofa that could turn into a bed there, and a full bath, and some attic storage space. The roof terrace, all, you'll see shortly that the profile of the building is the same, whether you have just open space on the third floor, or usable space. And again, as an upgrade, I think it'd be very nice. The roof terrace is very much like, much bigger than the ones we have on the Stoughton project that many of you went through a year and a half ago, I think. So, here's the view, assuming the roof terrace would be in place. If the roof terrace wasn't there, then that would all be just shingles, part of the roof. You'll see the roof shape soon. We've taken off the fencing, the brick fencing on the first two condos, so you can see what happens below. And on the further along, you can see that we'd have two openings, one the gate, and one a fixed opening, and a fairly high wall for privacy. It's something you might see in a Chicago neighborhood, perhaps on the south side. We've seen that quite a bit up there. And the view from the end looks like this. Again, if you have, either way, you'll either have a third window into your, the useful space on the third floor, or you'll just have additional natural light coming into your high pitched ceiling area. If we, if the owners elect to have a balcony, balconies will look like this. The end units wrap around a couple of feet with brick, and patios, doors go out to a kind of a round patio below. So, here's a general section. Again, if, if we didn't have the third floor, this would just be a high ceiling area. We, we think that the ability to look into the site, like we have shown it, would really be a positive thing for people living there. And I imagine we'd have some parties on that roof as well. Next building, the grade parking level, it's parking for twenty-four cars. It has, obviously, two stairwells for egress in case of a fire, when you're not going to use the elevator. We do have an elevator here to get to all three levels above. And mechanical spaces in the lower level, and tenant storage areas that they can rent if they need extra space also. And these units are similar, but they're, we've changed the building somewhat. When they were condos, we had four condos. Now, these are five units. All of these are modular for modular construction. Everyone has a balcony, or in this case, a patio on the second floor. The small apartment is not much different than a large apartment. It's, I think, one, I think it's two feet narrower. And you can kind of see that we do have, again, kitchen, living room, dining room, a master suite, a second bedroom. In the case of a, of a unit on the outside wall, we might have a study or a small child's bedroom, because we need outside windows and air for that. So, this is how the building looks, looking to the north. We will mound some earth, and planted earth around the sides, and primarily the south side and the east and west sides. Side view, and the front view, as, as people would be driving in, and they'd have an open walkway, heavily covered, however, with roofs and rain barriers. So, one of the things that we're striving for is low-impact design components. I've been doing modular architecture. I'd like to see something like this happen, where all the buildings are modular. We worked with our civil engineer closely to get the stormwater best management practices. We have concrete streets, walkways, and, and the perimeter path will all be the same. The path will be five feet wide, so there's room for two bikes to pass each other going opposite directions. Low maintenance after construction, and we are using durable construction materials as well. So, why modular? It's a greener form, a greener form of building, less material and time wasted during construction, super insulation for generally, general, greater energy savings. It's all built with greater precision in a climate-controlled environment, and you can read the rest. And here's some pictures of the plant. These happen to be pictures of our building on Stoughton going up. It was delivered early in the week of, in March, about three years ago, and it was, all the components were on the site within three weeks. And then, and then interiors and exteriors were put on over that. We did get done to be able to move in in August of that year, surprisingly. A building that we had to come here for to get a planning and development is a modular building known as Neighbor House, not too far from here. And I think most people will look at that and say, well, that can't be modular, because it looks too much like it's stick-built. If it was stick-built, it would probably have taken fifteen months, and we had it done in about a little over fifteen weeks. I think maybe you witnessed it going up every day. These really are just in here to show where we have parking and where the roadway is, where we have some of our utility connections. And I'm sure my civil who's watching this would say, you need to say more, but it's the watershed plan is what you're seeing here. And that's what I have. Any other questions? This is how the site looks today, so we'd like to leave it that way just for a little bit longer, and then mess it all up and create some, hopefully, quality homes and have quality people living there. And Michelle would like to say a few words.
When we first met with the plan board, they asked a little bit about why we'd gone to this concept of having an apartment building and these townhomes. First of all, we went from the condo project because of financial reasons, but second of all, we started really doing market research. And what we found out was that we needed a variety of housing, even for the baby boomers we were sort of talking about when we spoke to you before. What we found out is that a lot of people our age are thinking they don't want to stay in their great big home. You know, you raise children in it, you've got four bedrooms, two air conditioners, two furnaces, it's, it's ecologically wasteful, and also just a time to be able to make a change. And yet, people of our age are not quite ready to sign up for senior assisted living. They're sort of on the fence. And so, they're saying, we need to, we know we need to be proactive, we need to get rid of the big house. So, what do we do now? Well, we may want to maintain our equity by purchasing a home. If you purchase a home, the bankers are telling us that your equity in a home where you own your land is going to be greater, and that you'll be, also be able to get a better return on your unit. Other people are saying to us they're not sure what they want to do. They may want to move out of the area and go live near a child or something, and so they want to get rid of the big home, hopefully, and have someplace luxurious to live for a while, and are talking about renting. This is happening an awful lot in places like Sarasota, Florida, where they're saying they're not quite ready yet to, to take the fortune and put it into a senior living plan, and so they want to have some time. So, that's where we went to the apartment design. I'm not thinking about this as the kind of rental we had at Stoughton, I'm thinking of this fairly upscale. And of course, anybody can live here, but these are upscale apartments that are meant for people, like my dentist, he sold his house too quickly, didn't know what he wanted to do, and rented an apartment for two years while he figured out what he was going to do. And I think it offers us flexibility. There are townhomes there, we're hoping to encourage a more multi-age community. People at my age are saying, I think I'd like to live and hear the voice of children or hear young families around. The attractiveness of Meadowbrook Park across the street means if you're, have two working parents who are really, don't have time for home maintenance, don't really care to have a garden, they've got a playground across the street, they can walk down, down the road to Monocle's and get a pizza, they can do their shopping. And also, you know, just professionals that are very, very busy working will be attracted to a place that they can have. And in the apartments, you have your underground parking with your access pass, I'm sorry, your underbuilding parking, have your, your pass to get in. So, the market research has told us we have to be a little more flexible. We'll see how this goes, but that was our intent, to be able to more, offer more flexibility to people who are making changes in their life.
Okay. Eric?
That was exactly the question I was going to ask, and I think you answered it, but let me paraphrase what you said to be sure I've got it right. You're, you're actually expecting a variety of ages and sizes of family units.
I am.
Ranging all the way from, actually relatively young people to, not people as old as I am, but maybe people up into middle age as opposed to elderly.
I have actually, I mean, I don't know, maybe you consider me elderly, I'm on Medicare, but I do think that there are people, there are some people I talked to that were in their early eighties that said, I am just not ready yet to move into assisted living, who said that they would like to purchase a place. And I think the attractiveness of having your equity in a, in a smaller unit where they don't have to deal with, you know, we've got garden areas you can have, but you don't have to deal with heavy landscaping and heavy maintenance in the smaller unit, seem to be attractive to them. And then, they, they can use their equity then, give it to their children, and they can move on if they wish. There are also professionals moving into town that stay, for instance, some of the young doctors coming into town, they want a place, they work terribly long hours, and they want someplace like a townhome where they can live. And I'm thinking of that market as well, I've been approached from several different markets like that. You know, you want to live somewhere nicely, you want to have access, for heaven's sakes, we've got Christie, we've got Carl, we're, we're just all really close together on that corner. So, I'm saying, thinking completely differently when, when we designed a, we called it Olson Happy Acres, the first project. It was going to be a whole bunch of baby boomers going to move and live together in the pocket community, you know, it sounded very romantic at the time, but the reality is, we like to have a variety of people around us, you know. I think it's, it's really, it's life. Life is, life should be with many different ages around, helping and supporting one another. And you could focus on community in a place like this, instead of focusing on having to do so much lawn work, et cetera, if that's your choice.
As a person who walked to work today, have you thought about geothermal heated sidewalks?
Ooh.
We have not.
You have not?
We have not thought about it.
Dennis?
So, thank you for explaining a little bit more about your concept, about how this progress, how this project would accommodate, you know, various kinds of targeted people who'd be coming to live there. It does explain a little bit more, I guess I feel somewhat more assured that the quality and the, the concentration of individuals in this, I guess, I guess what I was concerned about was the concentration of, of individuals who come to live on this cul-de-sac. And you talk about the, the sense of community that you can have, if you have, if you own an apartment or a townhome here, and getting together and getting to know your neighbors is an important thing for neighborhood community, and I agree with that. So, I'm, I guess what I was wondering is how, how that need for pride of ownership and community building is affected by an apartment building, which probably will have faster turnover and, and not ownership potential. Because I, my understanding is that people will not be owning the apartments, and this is not a condominium as such, this is an apartment. So, it's going to be drawing people with different needs, really, and maybe different kinds of hours to this apartment. You may actually have many students interested in this apartment because of the variety of number of potential occupancies, different bedrooms could be rented by groups of students. So, have you thought what the effect will be for those clients that you're talking about who come to your apart, to this, this unit development, and are interested in making a semi-permanent residence for fifteen to twenty years, perhaps? And will they indeed be inclined to live right across a small, narrow strip of grass from a four-story apartment building? How do you see that working positively to achieve the goal that you have for that kind of stability?
Yep, this building will be the last one we build. It's our intention not, we're not building the whole site immediately. We, one of the banks of town found out that's a very bad plan in Florida by doing that. What we're going to do is we're going to have people purchase a certain percentage of, of the villa site before we go ahead and build. The last building to be put up will be the, the apartment building. There is a very good likelihood that we would be talking about perhaps renting to buy, to own, to perhaps even condo-ing this building. But right now, the financial institutions are saying that they will lend us money to do a condo association, but they will not lend our buyers money until it's seventy percent, the units are seventy percent occupied. I think if we build the other buildings and those are occupied, that sort of solves the problem of what you're talking about. I would like to see a stable community in that building, but at this point, this is what the financial institutions have suggested to us.
Well, then, do you imagine that in the future, as you build out and sell your other, other units, that your concept will change and you'll perhaps change the, you know, change the central building? And I guess I'm wondering, because those people who make the investment for long term, who live on the cul-de-sac, and at, and when they purchase their building, they don't see an apartment house anywhere nearby, they just see the development that they think they're buying into. Will they feel that they've been somehow misled?
The, anything that they receive, we'll see it, plans that are fully built out, so they'll know everything about the building.
Do you want to speak into the microphone?
No, I'm sorry. They'll, they'll know, they'll see this as our ultimate plan. They'll, they'll know, they'll see this as our ultimate plan, and we'll tell them that we'd like to start on the west side and go to the east on the villas, the west side to the east side on the townhouses, and we will wait to see what happens for the apartment building. We also have talked about the fact that people will come in, rent for a year or two, and they may say, well, now we can afford to buy one of the townhomes or one of the villas. So they're on the site, they're testing it out to see if they'd like to live there, and if they do, they have, you know, we'd like to say they're all sold out, but realistically, they're not going to all be sold out in probably three to five years. So we're, we're looking for that person who's capable of moving in, perhaps with a wife and a child, in an apartment, and they decide that they would like to stay there, and it will have availability for them in two different kinds of living, kind of a one-floor, everything's on one floor, or the townhome, townhouse, that's, that's multiple floors, which I think the younger, younger adults will like more than, more elderly.
Well, I mean, I bring this up because I, you know, I appreciate the, the need and the interest in what would be basically a semi-retirement village that you're creating. I mean, I think a lot, that appeals to many people. You know, it's also near Clark Lindsay, there might be people who transitioned from something like this to Clark Lindsay. So there's a lot of validity in it, and I, I'm just kind of wondering if, for me, for me, the, this is a higher density use of the land, and if you look around the neighborhoods around, this is, they don't, they don't have this high density here. Now, of course, this is on Windsor Road, it's an infill development, but the main question that, that I guess I, I'm concerned about and for you to consider, especially when you get to the point where you are considering raising the apartment building, is really just the stability of the neighborhood that you're building. Now, you know, if you build it and then you sell it to somebody else, and that changes the complexion because you don't have any obligation anymore, I don't know what kind of investment this is for you in the long term, but as a, as a part, a new part of our city, high density can bring problems as well as solutions. And so I'm just looking at potential issues that could be raised in the future that, you know, we'd hate to have, you know, create a kind of another pocket of issues on Windsor Road that duplicate, you know, similar situations we've seen in other parts of the city because of the density and the planning choices that have gone into it. So, you know, I would encourage you to reconsider the apartment building when it comes time to, to develop that and maybe make that into a, you know, a condominium site that has more stability because of ownership.
Thank you.
You know, there's a lot of difference between renting a place and owning a place, and it's all, if they're all served by the same driveway, that's a very large concern for me.
Libby?
Just, I just wanted to note that we do have some locations in Urbana where there's been successful villa or townhouse development with higher-quality apartments, and what comes to mind as a good example, I think, would be the Amber Ridge Apartments on Amber Lane, which are really, were an integral part of the Stone Creek development and sit directly across from the ridge. And I think that's probably the quality, you know, the closest to this proposed apartment in terms of the, the rents that are anticipated, the size of the apartments, the layout. We have so many student apartments in town and also older apartments that, that are more for affordable families at this point, but I do think we have some locations where we've seen the different housing choices of renting or buying side by side to mutual benefit. And I think there's a similar pattern on the other side of Stone Creek. I know there's a combination of rental condominium and homeownership in the Stillwater Landing and Waters Edge developments, which are quite proximate to the single-family homes in Stone Creek. So we, we know that it can be done in some parts of Urbana.
We, we have visited the apartment buildings on Stone Creek, and I've, I've talked to people who are managing it, and there seems to be no problem. It's, it's, they're not, they're not students, they're families typically.
Upscale.
Been a very successful apartment complex in Urbana, and we just have never received complaints from tenants, neighbors, so we know it can be done.
I think what we've learned is it's the management. Eric?
Yeah, I just wanted to sort of, I mean, I guess echo something that's been said, there are other community, it need not be the case that, that high density is, is associated with, with problems. And there, there are other communities, other cities, the, the last place that I lived for any length of time, other than Urbana, was Bethesda, Maryland. Now, that's a little different demographically and economically, everything is very expensive there. Nevertheless, the point is that there was very high density and very nice living. And, and Bethesda is a campus town, the campus is not the university, it's the National Institutes of Health, but the point, I think the kind of people that were attracted to that high-density, very good living clustered around, really great restaurants and so forth, were people who worked at National Institutes of Health. They were, you know, attitudinally and, and, you know, very similar to university folks, and I think it's very consonant, we would like to grow in a high-tech way. We've been talking about that very, very recently here. We'd like to, you know, become the Silicon Prairie. I think that high-density units like this, that are very convenient, close to work for Silicon Prairie denizens who work 80 hours a week, the, I think, I think this is a, a kind of experiment that we should, you know, as a community undertake and see, and continue to see how we can do high-density right with good living.
Diane?
First of all, I want to thank you for taking my phone call when I, when I got in touch with you a couple of weeks ago, I didn't realize I was bothering you in Florida, but I wish I was there in person, actually. But I did have some questions about the, the mix of housing, and you answered most of those just fine. I have no doubt this is going to be a very high-quality development, and I, I support it, I think it's a terrific addition to the, to this area. My only concern and questions related to the mix of owner-occupied townhomes and the eventual, you know, apartment building, and as long as you're owning the apartment building, it's going to be fine, because we all know the key is the management and maintenance of these buildings. But because this apartment building, as you explained, is a standalone entity, it can be sold to someone else, and it could be a completely different owner, of course, from all the people around it. So then the question is, going forward into the future, is that same high standard of maintenance and management going to, to keep on?
Libby, can you talk about the homeowners' association?
And, yeah, and so I had a conversation with Libby today and expressed those same concerns, and we came up with some language that I think addresses that in terms of having the homeowners' association include the property owner of the apartment building, so there is a connection between the types of, you know, standards, maintaining the standards of maintenance.
And we are in agreement.
And you're, you're okay with that?
Yes, we are.
Okay, and then the other thing is, we're also adding language that the final plat will contain some covenants regarding the appearance and maintenance and upkeep standards for the apartment building as well. So, so those two additions, which we'll talk about when we get to the subdivision plat, I think address a lot of the concerns. We've just been, just been dealing with a horrible situation where we've had high-density housing in a single-family neighborhood on Philo Road, and when the management is terrible and when you have a slumlord who doesn't care, then it has dire consequences for the neighborhood. So I just wanted to make sure we're taking the steps we need to prevent that from happening.
We want the same thing that you want.
Yeah, okay, we're all on the same page, so, so anyway, I'm, I'm excited about this and look forward to watching the construction.
Thank you.
Okay. Charlie?
Okay, well, I'd like to go ahead and get this moving then, so I'll move ordinance number 2014-0111, an ordinance approving a preliminary development plan for a planning development.
Second. Okay, motion by Smythe, second by Ammons, and Bill?
Um, yeah, just a couple other comments and questions. I think it's an interesting development, I was low concerned by density, but if the neighbors on to the west are okay with it, that seemed to be the closest part, but also the duplexes there kind of face, the orientation seems like it might work well to be close there. So the setback is a little close there, but I think it would work. I think the density is also helped by your careful planning to have this open space in the center, so when you go out your front door, you, you don't feel really confined, you have some open space to look at, to walk into. It seemed like there were a few extra parking spaces, I wondered if you'd considered maybe some covered bicycle parking, or even on the ground floor of the apartment unit, where there's the storage, tenant storage and house storage, or maybe combine, make the electrical and water smaller to, to make a bicycle room. I know Howard Wakelin has some apartments on campus, he has bicycle rooms, and he actually markets that as a feature, and I think it probably helps on the webpage.
Well, we do have bicycle parking, but we don't have covered bicycle parking.
We could do that in the, the big building, sure.
But that's just something to consider, maybe when you get to that stage. I, I like the idea of the villas, I, I think that's probably pretty similar to what's currently on Whitehall Court, maybe, are you familiar with those? There's some condos and some zero-lot line there that sell really well, and about that same price range. I know people that have retired and just paid cash for those, they wouldn't even have to worry about a bank loan. And, and I think probably if, if you're looking at that market for the villas, that might be something that would happen pretty often there. Oh, I think that's about it, from, the only other question was, where are these modules built, and can we get the factory to move to Champaign County?
Well, we've been in discussion with that company, and Champaign is, Champaign County is, is in their target area.
The, the factory is actually near Bloomington. It's a very small town, can't remember the name of it, but at any rate, they, they have a huge building, it's all climate-controlled, it's quite amazing. Have you been there, too?
Well, we've had discussions about being an example of the architecture that could happen if they, it can happen anyway, but they, they're focusing on coming to Champaign County. We had a meeting just regarding that subject, as we were getting some prices that we won't reveal yet, but pricing is obvious, be important for us and for our, our future clients, but the fact that this could be here, and we could all start building, I think, the correct way, even though I've been doing it the wrong way for about 45 years, or 35 years, I think I've been doing it the right way for the last three years, not, not that many years, less, 38 years total, 35 years.
Probably the most important thing is just getting the public to understand that modular can be architectural, can be flexible, and is just a really energy-efficient and, and very exact way of building is really an important thing.
Okay, thank you very much.
Carol?
I just had one question on the.
On the, the development plan right there, it, it shows little streets on the side, but people can't actually exit from those streets. They can only enter and exit from the one drive, is that right?
They can walk, but they can't drive.
They can't drive through.
Yeah, this is the main, main entry, and it goes that way, and it's a one-way drive, and it doesn't expect here, so this is the only two-way drive.
And they mentioned earlier, and Libby now mentioned, they mentioned a emergency exit on the other side here.
It's right, it's right here.
Oh, okay, so I thought that was grass, but that'll be an open, it'll be a little dry or something.
It'll look like grass, but it has support underneath it, the grass grows through.
There's three little, you can't see them there, but there's three little posts here that the driver won't take those down, but the assistant to the driver.
Oh, I see.
Push down, they have a flat, so they can get in. I think it's like 15 seconds to that thing.
Oh, okay.
The appearance is as though it's grass, and you're not supposed to drive there, but it's reinforced.
It shouldn't really attract people wanting to get onto Windsor, even if the bollards weren't there.
Okay, I, I really like it, I like the idea, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
We'll step back then, you want to discuss this?
Sure, we're gonna, we're gonna vote on this now, unless anyone else wants to make a comment or ask a question. We have a motion to approve ordinance number 2014-01-111. Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next, do you want to have another discussion to go on to the next one? Jeff Engstrom for ordinance number?
That was, well, yeah.
You have one more.
Well, do you want to?
We have to vote on 14111.
Is there a motion?
I'll move 2014-0111, an ordinance approving a final development plan for a planning development at 704 East, East Windsor Road.
Motion by Smythe, seconded by Ammons, any other discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries. Now we are on to ordinance number 2014-01-112, Jeff Engstrom.
All right, I just wanted to point out, we passed out tonight a substitute ordinance that has some of the language that addresses Ms. Marlin's concerns, so we'll discuss that when we get to the end of the report here. And just really quickly, we already went through the site plan, so this is just a preliminary plat, which will create individual lots to be sold with all the townhomes. And there's a, it's just the preliminary plat at this juncture, the final plat will be forthcoming later, and we'll see the actual owner's certificate and homeowners' association, how that is set up, that'll be with the final plat. But just looking at the preliminary plat here, it's got the, all the different lots for the townhomes, the commons area, it meets all the, all the requirements of a preliminary plat, except for a few waivers, and these waivers are really necessary to, to fit in the vision of the developer on this small site. Just a couple little things, and in, in terms of the waiver criteria, staff has analyzed them, and we feel that they're necessary, they don't, they don't harm nearby properties, and they don't harm the, the general public health, safety, and welfare, so staff approves of all the proposed waivers. The waivers really are just to have a reduced width for right-of-way along the public street that enters into the site. The required right-of-way is 60 feet, the actual right-of-way here would be 40 feet, but the pavement itself would be, would match the minimum required in the subdivision ordinance, so it will be at least 31 feet of street pavement here. Let's see. The other waivers, just that every lot is adjacent to a public street, some of these lots for the townhomes in the southeast face on the public, or the private alley instead of a public street. The detention setbacks, it's not, there's a waiver for detention setback, which the developer is going to mitigate with some screening and signage to make sure there's no impacts there. Mentioned the right-of-way, and the other, the other waivers have to do with act, the width of lots, and the width of the access portion of lots, and these are really just artifacts of breaking these down into separate lots. These townhouse units could be built as proposed with no waivers if they were all on one large lot, but having the separate lots just requires the, the decreased width along here. So really, there's no negative impact on public health or the neighbors, staff is in support of all the waivers, and on the, on the ordinance that we passed And on the, on the ordinance that we passed out on page two, staff is proposing a couple of additional conditions under section one. That the homeowners association shall be established as part of the final plat, which council will be approving, or will be reviewing at a later time, with all property owners participating in accordance with the subdivision ordinance. And a second condition, that the owner's certificate for the final plat contain covenants requiring appropriate appearance, maintenance, and upkeep for all buildings on the property, including the townhomes and the apartments. And that's it.
Okay, Diane?
I move approval of ordinance number twenty-fourteen dash zero one dash one one two.
Second.
With the changes as outlined.
As presented.
As presented.
Second.
Second by?
Eric.
Eric. Okay, motion by Marlin, seconded by Jacobson. Dennis Roberts?
Yeah. So I want to ask, in that the cul-de-sac is a private street, and in that the alley is not, but there is probably about, it's not, it's not a public street, is that correct?
I'm sorry, the cul-de-sac itself is a public street.
Yes, it is.
Yes.
But the alley is private.
Yes.
And in that there's going to be about fifteen cars parked in the alley, who's responsible for snow removal of the alley?
It'll be the homeowners association.
But the city will be expected to plow the subdivisions, cul-de-sac?
Yes, we anticipate that the homeowners association will probably contract private plowing of the entire cul-de-sac and alley, just to get it done quicker.
So that's a big assumption, and there's going to be some people there who are, of course, waiting for the snowplow to come to, to clear their front, you know, the cul-de-sac, because that's a public street, and they could expect that. And then there's going to be this corner on the lower right where those people are going to be very upset, because the snowplow will not enter down into their, their, into their, what they call a street. They're going to see it as being a street, but it's really a private parking lot. So that's going to be perhaps not a problem, you think? Or I'm just wondering if, you know, there's a consideration here that, we're doing waivers, considerable number of waivers to approve this. This is, this is an area that's going to cause, I think, a lot of calls to City Hall, you know, and various people can get calls about why they're, why they're, why they're part of the street, as they see it, hasn't been serviced. So this is a, I'm just saying that this is, I see this as a future problem.
Yeah, from what I understand, there, the whole development will have contracting for snow removal. Because it is a cul-de-sac street, it's on the, the lower priority for overall city plowing. So they'll probably just have the private company do the whole cul-de-sac and the private alley all at once.
Yeah, probably doesn't mean will.
Okay, but I'm just saying, I just, I just expect that this could be.
Charlie?
It's a parking lot. I mean, it's obvious it's a parking lot. I don't expect a parking lot to be plowed by, by the city unless it's a city-owned parking lot. And so, I mean, it's pretty obvious when you buy something, or you rent something, you know, you rent an apartment, you know, the parking lot's not typically a city parking lot. It's not, not in your expectation. And unless we label it a city alley, then there would be an expectation of us plowing it.
Could this be worked out in the final plat, the snow question?
Yes, it could.
Okay. All right. Anyone else? Charlie?
I was just gonna add, you know, I watched the, the construction of the apartment building on Stoughton Street. It's a regular, you know, it's a regular route by bicycle, and I passed by the neighbor house construction, watching it done over, you know, just this really quick period, one summer, to and from work. That was my route to and from work, though they did block me once or twice. But it, but it was worth watching, when, you know, watching the cranes drop the different parts into place. So, and, and the building does look great. I mean, we got what we asked for in that PUD. I expect to get even more out of this one, so I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing this. And I, I think it will be great new kind, or new housing stock to the community, and infill development across from the park, I think, will be very popular.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries. And we do have some young people who've been waiting for their dad to get an appointment. And I wondered if we could, with your permission?
So moved.
All right. There's a motion to move to item B under new business. Fire Division Chief, is there a second to the motion?
Yes.
Okay, Marlin, yeah, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Well, it's unanimous. Chief Nightlinger?
Okay, since I was appointed to fire chief, we've had an opening in the fire department for division chief, and that would have been at the end of December. And through the month of January, we did a testing process to decide who we would recommend to the mayor to appoint for the new division chief position. And through our process, we did an assessment center that included a writing assignment, an inbox exercise, a tactical exercise, and a panel interview. And the panel was made up of all the current chief officers of the Urbana Fire Department, and the interim fire chief of Champaign, and Les Borman from our Human Resources Division. So we felt we had a really good assessment center, and so on the twenty-ninth of January, I recommended to the mayor the appointment of Captain Kyle Hench. And Kyle's been with the city for fifteen years. He's been a dedicated employee. I'm kind of reading from the memo that I sent the mayor. And he's received several commendations during his career, including a unit citation for life-saving actions, outstanding service citation for actions above the call of duty, and also firefighter of the year. He's served on our apparatus specification committee for a number of years, and is currently the program manager in that area. He's managed the confined space program and the rope rescue program also. And Kyle teaches at the Illinois Fire Service Institute in the basic firefighter programs, and he's taught in the rope rescue programs. He's also the president of our two percent Board of Trustees, which manages the foreign fire insurance tax money, and he's done that since, I think, two thousand and two. He's been serving as division chief, upgraded while DC Chisholm has been out on sick leave since September, so he's had some time in the position. He's also a past executive board member of the IFF Local eleven forty-seven, and so I think he's well qualified for the position.
Okay, well, I certainly agree, and I'm recommending his appointment.
Move approval?
I'll second that.
Okay, there's a motion by Charlie, seconded by Dennis. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It's unanimous. It carries. He didn't poke you with that, did he? He didn't poke you with that, because we don't want workers comp on your first day. Okay, he will start tomorrow. Thank you very much. Okay.
Mayor, can we do the other?
Yeah, let's do the other appointment. You want to do the other appointment? Market at the Square Advisory Board, Shaya Balahi. Is there a motion for that?
I'll make a motion to move approval.
Second.
Okay, motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Okay, now back to our regularly scheduled agenda here. Reports of standing committees, the committee of the whole? I don't know who was chairing it.
I chaired the committee of the whole last week.
Eric Jacobson.
And on behalf of the committee of the whole, I present resolution number twenty-fourteen dash zero one dash zero zero three R, resolution creating a new fund associated with dissolving the special tax allocation fund, with a recommendation for approval.
Okay, motion by Erickson, seconded by Ammons. Any discussion? All those in favor, please know I will have a roll call, right?
Probably best, probably best. It's money.
Let's have a roll call, because it's big money here. Okay. Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Mayor pressing, since it's money. Yes. That motion carries.
On behalf of the committee of the whole, I present resolution number twenty-fourteen dash zero one dash zero zero four R, resolution authorizing and approving an intergovernmental agreement providing for the creation of the Champaign County Geographic Information System Consortium. On behalf of the committee, I recommend approval.
I'll second.
A motion by Jacobson, seconded by Roberts. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries.
On behalf of the committee of the whole, I present resolution number twenty-fourteen dash zero one dash zero zero five R, resolution authorizing construction engineering services agreement for Illinois Jobs Now Funds, construction engineering and participating construction agreement for one point two seven miles of South High Cross Road, Illinois Route one thirty. On behalf of the committee, I move approval.
Second.
Okay, motion by Jacobson, seconded by Marlin. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying, you want this one to be a roll call?
Yeah, probably should be.
Okay, let's have a roll call. Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Mayor pressing? Yes. That motion carries.
On behalf of the committee of the whole, I present ordinance number twenty-fourteen dash zero one dash zero one three, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance fiscal year twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, High Cross Road Construction Engineering twenty fourteen. On behalf of the committee, I move approval.
Second.
A motion by Jacobson, seconded by Smythe. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
You forgot one. Same. Yes. That motion carries. Thank you all very much. And there being no further business, oops, I don't, well, have to ask, reports of special committees, do we have any of those? Reports of officers?
There are.
Okay.
Sorry. Yes, everyone should have received this month's economic development report, just to highlight a few items. We did provide a two thousand and thirteen year in review. There are a number of businesses that have opened in two thousand and thirteen, and there's a list and a map of new businesses. Related to downtown, Transitions held a ribbon cutting for an expansion at their location at Lincoln Square Mall. Dancing Dog Eatery and Juicery is a new vegan restaurant and juice bar that will be at the former Primal, Prime Light Studio space at one twenty-six West Main Street. The Economic Development Corporation, the City of Urbana, and property owner Joe Petrie work cooperatively to attract a thirty-plus employee office user at County Plaza, so that's a great addition to downtown. Also, Champaign Cycle in Urbana is moving forward with their plans at one ten South Race Street. Philo Road, the, Carletta Donaldson did mention Unity Performing Arts Center. I believe fundraising is ongoing for that project. In talking to building safety, I don't believe there have been any permits at this point, but I believe the project is moving forward. It's actually been some time, so, since I've had contact with Tanya Parker, so I do intend to get in touch with her and have a more robust update for you in the future. A couple other projects, mentioned last month, activity at Gregory Place. Deer Seventy-two is moving forward with an expected opening in February. Co-Fusion is very close to completion with a soft opening sometime in February, and then work is underway at Cafe Benny, which will probably have a March opening. Just a few last items, there was a great program at Dr. Martin Luther King Junior School involving student performances celebrating Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Day and the installation of the new sculpture. And that celebration was made possible in part by an arts in the schools grant from the Urbana Public Arts Commission. The applications for the two thousand and fourteen Market at the Square season are now available on the city's website, so if anyone's interested in participating in the two thousand and fourteen Market at the Square season, please go to the website. And that's about all I have. I'd be happy to try to answer questions.
Any questions? Diane?
Not a question, but just one, one correction on a date. The innovation celebration is actually on February twenty-seventh, instead of February twenty-sixth is listed here. And it's something I hope everyone in the council can go to, because Colab, Macho is one of the three businesses that's been nominated to receive the Entrepreneurial Excellence Social Venture Award, so I hope he actually is going to be the winner, and at least we'll all be there to support him. So that is February twenty-sixth from five to eight p.m. at NCSA.
Yes, Tom?
I'm sorry, yeah, twenty-seventh.
I'm sorry, one last item. I do want to mention that we've been engaging in a recruitment process for a new public arts coordinator. We are, we have made an offer, and it has been accepted. Our new public arts coordinator's name is Lisa Hatchadorian. She has public art experience and experience at art galleries in New York, New Jersey, and in Casper, Wyoming, and her first day is February tenth, so a week from today, so we're happy to have her.
Okay, great. Charlie has a question?
Okay, thank you very much. I would like to report on my meeting with the U.S. Conference of Mayors in Washington, and I talked with mayors from some very large American cities, including Philadelphia, Baltimore, and Chicago, about hospitals paying their fair share of taxes. And we all met with members of the Obama administration, and that was what my topic of concern was, and I sat across from the mayor of Rochester, Minnesota, where the Mayo Clinic is located, and he says that the Mayo Clinic pays taxes. And we also were able to meet in the White House with President Obama, and that was a lot of fun. And so I also talked with a lot of Illinois mayors about hospital taxation and about adequate funding for the nine-one-one system, because we're being asked by MetCad to contribute another hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars more next year, which we don't have, so I think we should try to get the same taxation of cell phones that Chicago has. Right now, the nine-one-one system is primarily financed by landlines, and people are not using landlines as much, so even though the expenses are going up, our revenues have been declining, and that's why the cities are being asked to pick up a bigger and bigger share for MetCad. So I see we have Bill Gray, who would like to give a report.
One announcement. This Wednesday was going to be the open house by IDOT to talk about the Interstate fifty-seven, Interstate seventy-four interchange in the community of Champaign-Urbana-Savoye Community. This is probably the largest public infrastructure project that will be happening here in the years ahead. The, this has been postponed because of the anticipated snowfall, so it has been rescheduled to Wednesday, the February nineteenth, and it's three to five in the afternoon at the Champaign County Highway Department Building on East Main Street. So rather than being this Wednesday at three to five p.m., it's been postponed to the nineteenth. So I wanted to let you know that, because I think there's a lot of interest. There's various options that will be discussed, and it has a significant safety, public, public interest in this project.
Where was it going to be at?
At the Champaign County Highway Department Building on East Main Street, and it'll be held on Wednesday, February nineteenth, three to five p.m. is an IDOT open house. That's it.
And I talked with a lady at Common Ground today, who was very complimentary about seeing the city crews filling the potholes. They, we get a lot of criticism about potholes as if we're creating them, but I was happy that someone was thanking our, our crews, because they do work very hard, and your, your staff has been on many twelve-hour shifts, one storm after another, so I know that's very tiring. Yeah. So thank you very much. They are appreciated. They are appreciated. Okay, anything else? There being no further business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.